Okay, I think we're live. So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the staff meeting today. Mr. Manager, what do you have for us?
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. We have a room full this morning. We have three items, basically, to talk about today. You'll notice that the Election Commissioner is sitting at a table with a microphone in front of her, so she wants to give an update. And I think she wants to talk about the acquisition of PollPads, which is on the agenda for tomorrow, and maybe give a little bit of historical perspective on that and talk about pros and cons. And I know we also have IT staff in the room to talk about security of that. I know that was brought up historically. So we'll talk about that topic first. And then Rusty has a presentation, and this actually stemmed from our budget retreat discussion on the public safety facility and what the future could look like for that. And then Tanya has a couple of legislative updates because things are moving and shaking in Topeka that she wants to discover, particularly with the Commission, based on a call that we had yesterday with our lobbyist. So with that, Laura, we'll start off with you.
Thank you. Good morning. Do I have to push the button? I do? Just to turn it on? Okay, sorry, I'm new to this. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning, Laura. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. As you know, we have been in the process of purchasing electronic PollBooks for the last year. Our PollPads have reached their end of life and are no longer supported by the vendor or by Apple as of December 31st, 2022. So the original purchase of these occurred back on March 1st, 2017, when the B O C C unanimously approved the purchase of our current fleet of PollPads.
When was that again?
March 1st, 2017.
Okay.
The original contract was $563,000, but that included licensing and other items, not just the PollPads themselves. IT estimates the new devices will have a lifespan of approximately four to five years. All four of the big counties that have election commissioners use electronic PollBooks. I believe Shawnee County uses another vendor, but Johnson, Wyandotte, and Sedgwick all use the same vendor. Electronic PollBooks are connected through a private network to the Internet, and I have IT here if you wanted to talk more about the technology side of our PollBooks. They are not connected to the voting system whatsoever, so they are safe and secure. The use of electronic PollBooks eliminates numerous man-hours. Approximately 80 staff hours are needed to print and inspect paper PollBooks. Requires a lot of overtime. On Election Day and after Election Day, approximately 200 staff hours are saved by not having paper PollBooks anymore. If we did not have our electronic PollBooks, we would also only be allowed to early vote at the election office. We would no longer have satellite locations for early voting. But if there's any other questions about the positive aspects of using electronic PollBooks, I'm here to answer them.
What is the price of these again?
A hundred... Let me get that. $192 for 80.
$192 plus X a year, 40,000 or 50,000 a year for support?
$56,000 a year for support.
And in 17, when we bought the previous ones that now have expired, five, six... We paid $500,000 for those?
But that included other stuff, like licensing. So they were 300... So we did a pricing comparison. Back in 2017, the PollPads themselves were $375 each. They are now $300 each.
Okay.
So prices come down for technology.
What kind of questions do we have?
Thank you. Again, thank you for being here today. I have no doubt we're going to buy these PollPads. So I just wanted to throw out some information that I've been chewing on for the last number of years, and I don't... I understand the PollPads is probably a necessity more than anything. I do have a couple of questions. So again, we actually purchased PollPads back in 2010 as well. Those were ES&amp;S PollPads, but they didn't go well, and we went back to paper PollBooks after that. So there's a number of years in the early 2000s where we had, I should say, early 2010, I don't know what years we had that, but it was like 2011, 12, 13. There was a number of years where we had paper PollPads again, I'm sorry, paper PollBooks again. And so the paper Poll... The PollBooks, the number one reason we have to have them is because we have the remote voting. We have, I think, 16 remote poll sites that we use, and those 16 poll sites have to be dynamically updated. And if someone checks into one site, they were to go to the second site, they would already know that you already checked them to go somewhere else.
Correct.
And that's the reason why the electronic PollPads are a necessity. So my question has always been, how many people are using the remote sites? And I still don't really have an answer to that question yet. We know that the total number of people voting early is pretty high, but we don't know where they're voting necessarily. My personal anecdotal experience is when I've gone into those sites, I tend to monitor these because I like to see how the election is going. Rarely do I see a line at the remote early voting sites. There's almost never a line. Usually, there's one or two people voting at any given moment. It's just they're not heavily used, I'll say that. I know that the last day of voting on the 2022 cycle was very, very long lines, but they didn't have enough equipment set up, I think. That's one reason that added to that. Of course, this was also on Monday, after the remote sites were shut down, right? And that was also a very unusual election, in the fact that we had a lot more interest in that election from the Value in the Both Amendment that was on that race. But anyway, a couple of other points here. Earlier, you said someone said it was five to seven years for this equipment. Now you're saying four to five. Which is it?
Four to five.
Four to five. So we have to plan on four. Four years is what we should plan for, because we don't know if we can get to five. One of the reasons we say these are obsolete is because they're not one that's supported by the manufacturer. I have an old computer that I don't use it for much, and I'm not worried about getting a virus because I don't use it for anything that connects to the Internet, for example. What is the concern about these PollPads that requires a patch or updated firmware? What's going on there that causes that necessary update?
Well, from a security aspect, it's the same with a PC or an Apple product or a cellphone. Once anything that is on a network of any kind, once the vendor stops patching that operating system, or even the hardware vendor might stop upgrading the firmware levels on that piece of hardware, it becomes a security vulnerability. You have, for example, you have apps on your iPhone or your cellphones that require updates, right? And usually, when you look at that list before you install an update, it'll say, a lot of them will say bugs and fixes, right? Sometimes you get enhancements, but a lot of times it's just bugs or holes in their software that they released to fix. Well, if an operating system falls out of support from that vendor, and that vendor no longer releases bug fixes and updates to that, then it becomes a vulnerability.
Vulnerability for like a virus or a hack?
Yes.
So one of the questions I had from the very beginning is, is this hackable? And everyone says it's not because it's on a private network.
Correct.
So again, either it's hackable or it's not. If it's hackable, I understand the point. If it's not hackable, then I don't understand why we're worried about someone infiltrating our system if it's not accessible to them because it's a separate network, so to speak. We have to decide, we have to decide which side are we on? Is it hackable, and we need these fixes? Or is it not hackable, and it's safe, and therefore the fixes don't really make sense?
So as long as the operating system is being updated by the vendor, then it is safe. Joe Courier, our CISO, is here. We knew that there were some questions about the security of these devices. Joe, could you come up? So one of the first things I did was contact No Inc., the vendor that supplies this system, and asked them of their security protocols. How are they securing these processes, right? So they sent me a one-page technical bulletin that I won't read to you because it's got acronyms after acronyms on it that gets very technical. That's why I have Joe here. So the vendor, No Inc., uses Amazon Web Services. So they use a data center that Amazon controls. Data centers like that are given a rating. They're given certifications. This one has what's called a SOC 2, S-O-C, and then the number 2, rating to this data center infrastructure. They also use a protocol, TLS, using FIPS 140-2 encryption. That doesn't mean a lot to me, but to the security guys, it means a lot. When I first got this information and I asked Joe about SOC 2 and FIPS 140-2, I believe his answer was something like, that's the gold bar standard or something that's out there. And he can explain it a lot better than I can. So I brought him here to give you a little background on those types of certifications and how that communication is possible and secure.
Before he speaks, I mean, because he might want to answer this question while he's speaking. So the data flow, if I understand correctly, so the state maintains the, what they call Elvis, the state's database on registered voters, that's called Elvis. We, in the county, have our own Sedgwick County data. We also manipulate when someone registers to vote. You update this, then it also pushes that data back to the state so that the county, the state will actually update their records to match what the county just put in. When we go to an election cycle, we pull data from the state down to our PollPads, but the way it's done is it goes from Elvis to the county, then gets uploaded to No Inc., which is a third-party vendor. And you just concerned me even more when you said Jeff Bezos is involved in this in some way. We push that data over to No Inc., and they manage that data during the daytime. As we update, someone checks in to vote, they're not pinging our local data. They're not pinging the state data. They're pinging the data that's hosted by No Inc. at that moment. At the end of the day, they send it, we can download the information of who voted today. They are also pushing the data down to the dynamic updating of those PollPads across the county, wherever they happen to be set up. But we pull that data at the end of the day, we update our records or verify our records, and we update that data to the state again, and that same thing happens again tomorrow. This is a daily process during the election cycle. So the data is, you know, simple, when I was, I assumed initially that those PollPads were connected to the state directly, and were essentially checking county data and state data. I didn't realize this third party was involved in this. When you realize the data is not being hosted throughout the daytime during voting by county or by state, it's done through No Inc., a third-party vendor in a different state. And by the way, in the 2020 election cycle, they got bogged down because they're not doing this just for Kansas. They're doing this for lots of states across the country. And they got bogged down to the point where the sites that were using that service had to go to provisional balloting only until they got it to catch up again, turn back on again. Then we had to reconcile our records, so to speak, because people had voted provisionally when they had planned to vote a normal process. And so No Inc., we put a lot of faith in their ability to do this. And when it didn't go well, we ended up having to use provisional balloting locally because this third-party vendor didn't do their job dynamically enough to keep up with what was going on nationally. So those are some concerns I've got. So now, with that reference point, I'm sure you have plenty to say. Thank you.
Well, I'll just add that we put faith. It's always been trust but verify, right? They say they are, they meet these certifications, but we need to verify that. And it's very common in cloud systems. We moved to an HR cloud system back in 2020, so we've got people's bank information, we've got social security numbers on a cloud system. We're moving to a cloud financial system next year. I mean, a cloud versus on-prem technology is the majority of the industry in technology these days. So, Joe, can you speak specifically to the SOC 2 data center rating and the FIPS 140-2 protocol?
Certainly. And Joe, can you wait just a second? Commissioner Dennis has a question.
I appreciate all the technical detail, okay? At one point in my life, I was technically certified by Cisco and A+ and all these kinds of things. But all of that passes by. Today, I can tell you, and you can tell me all about your gold standard, but it's still not going to understand it. But the bottom line is that, just as I am no longer qualified to do that because the technology has moved, the old pads that we're using, the technology has gone beyond what we bought back in 2017. And so that's really the discussion that we need to be having today. For example, different operating systems, when other software that runs on that operating system gets upgraded, sometimes those old operating systems can't use that new software. So trying to get us to understand your bits and bytes is probably not too useful to us as decision-makers, okay? And I appreciate very much that we have people like you all that can tell us that we're doing the right thing. But we're at a point today where we've got old equipment that can't operate any longer with the new software that's available out there, and we have to upgrade it. And we can make two decisions at this point. We can take a look at going back to something that was happening in the olden days with pieces of paper, or we can take a look at what's happening today with technology. I think that we've got four commissioners that are ready to move forward with the technology. And I don't know if we're spending our time wisely trying to find out how bits and bytes work.
Good point. I think Joe can address some of that without being too far into the technical weeds of it.
Yeah, and Mike had me look through the technical bulletin that he received from No Inc. Some of the things that I outlined was the protocols they use and the FIPS compliance and the SOC 2 certifications. One thing that I'll compare that to is it's the same protocols, the same standards that are used for your banking transactions between, you know, trading stocks, e-commerce, and everything that you do online with banking, as well as healthcare, viewing medical records and scheduling appointments. It's also used by the Department of Defense, defense contractors, GSA, and Department of Homeland Security, and more.
Okay. I'll try to wrap up my comments. That's a good summary. That's a really good summary. Maybe one or two minutes, I'll try to wrap up my comments, and I'm sure I'll just end this at this point.
Okay, because it's four of us.
I understand. That's why I said I started out by saying you're going to get your PollPads tomorrow. No matter what I do, I already know that's going to happen. So let's just, but I do think my comments are relevant. I was listening to an elections hearing or someone, yeah, it was a hearing in the House a few days ago, and one of the questions came up, well, when they were debating a bill, they said, what's the state's compelling interest? Actually, this was during a committee hearing. What's the state's compelling interest in doing this? And the answer came back, actually, I think it was a floor debate. That's where it was. Floor debate in the House, and the chairman of elections in the House came back and said, it's about public perception, it's public confidence in the system we have. It's understandable. If we have a, if we have a, we used to have machines that weren't auditable, okay? You go back a lot longer time ago, back when we were children, we had machines that didn't have any paper trail whatsoever. It was a system that we had to just trust the people doing their job, they did it correctly. We have an audible system today. There's one piece of this system, when I say it's not connected to the Internet, I have to say, except for this piece, and that if you understand exactly what's going on here, it is concerning. I would say, again, as much as I appreciate the security that's in place, we're trying to stay ahead of the bad guys, okay? The former, two commissioners ago, although she was doing something that was not allowed by Secretary of State, what she did was perceivably, was perceivably safe on a government computer using the very same encryption that was available at that time, doing her job, and she was essentially let go because she violated what was perceived to be a security threat. These things are, these things require updates because they're hackable otherwise. The bad guys might get in there and do something nefarious. They're trying to do that. Our Secretary of State even says that, that there's people attempting to attack these systems. My point is, a system that doesn't depend on this dynamic update going to a third party and out-of-state, that system, in my opinion, is complex, unnecessarily complex. It is connected to the Internet. We're trying to stay ahead of the bad guys, and frankly, it's unnecessary. It's about convenience. Convenience causes us to make a decision that's fairly expensive, and it's not something we have completely in our own control. We're trusting someone else to do their job. And my opinion is, if you ask people who are concerned about election security, they would rather not do it this way. They would rather see paper PollBooks because it is a process we have total control over, and it's audible. We have, every aspect of that vote, of that election cycle, is in our own fingertips. And I think that's what public confidence is necessary to consider that as an option. By the way, it looks to me like the majority of our Kansas counties do not use paper PollPads. They still use paper PollBooks. And it wasn't only just a decade ago, we were doing the same thing. So it's not, it's not like it's a crazy conversation. In light of the fact that people are trying to hack our stuff, I think we should have a conversation. I'm probably going to vote, I'm not sure how I'll vote tomorrow. Obviously, you have the support to do this, so I think we just end the conversation now. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And thanks, Joe, you made, same protocol that banking transactions and medical transactions and Department of Defense. You want these as the election commissioner. I have trust and faith in our IT department, and you also. Thank you for being here and explaining what is preferred to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Okay, next topic.
We'll talk about public safety.
All right. What do we have here, Tom? Rusty?
All right. So we're going to talk a little bit about the Joint Public Emergency Preparedness Center. This came up last year. We talked about this last year. It was on the CIP last year on the watch list. We did not drag it into the CIP this year. We did apply for a grant last year. We'll get to that in a minute. But I just want to do a high-level front-end explanation, and then we can talk about what exists as far as temporary, interim architect drawings and things like that. Let me move this thing. Sorry. All right. It'll work.
It's a good thing, good thing we have IT here to make sure.
Yep. So, with the pandemic... Got heckling from the chairmen.
All right.
Commissioner Dennis, yeah. Those guys are, those guys are more technological savvy than me. Okay, so with the pandemic, we, nationwide, we realized that preparedness had kind of fallen behind, particularly when it came to pandemic-type events. We also learned other lessons through that, through that time period into the present. So in 2007, the Public Safety Building was built down the street, 700 North Main. The building on the top floor is 911 Emergency Communications Call Center, and on the first floor is Emergency Management. A state-of-the-art building. It is a secured building. It's hardened to withstand hurricane-force winds. It has an air filtration system to ensure that it removes impurities in the event of a viral situation. It has backup power plant so that if power goes down, it will continue to run without And it has done its job well for many years, and we certainly aren't finished with it. Currently, we are doing renovations on the second floor for 911. But with that, brings changes to the building. So currently, we're remodeling the second floor. Alora is losing about 1,100 square feet of office and conferencing space. The building was occupied in 2008, was when they began to move into it, into 2009. 911 had 71 call center employees. Today, they have 98. And at the time, they were managing about 435,000 calls. This year, they were up to about 774,000, serving 31 agencies, 1,100 texts, that number's going up, and then about 7 million radio transmissions. Emergency Management started out in that building with about four FTEs. They haven't changed a whole lot. They have five now. We added one through the pandemic, so we had a logistics specialist that would manage all the inventory. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but it was something that was desperately needed in emergency management. KDOT also occupies this building. They've had two offices upstairs. One of those is demolished, and the other one was needed to move supervisors from 911 into. So KDOT has now moved down to the first floor. They're in temporary office space while we work out the details of their existence on the first floor. But they have been in the building. We have an agreement with them through resolution that they will have space in the building, both admin space. They've had two offices, and that's what they'd like to continue to have, as well as space out in the call center to monitor the boards there. They have two consoles in the call center. So now, first floor is moving into the, or second floor is moving down into the first floor, which we anticipated was going to happen. We anticipate that that will continue to be a necessity over the next three to five years. Alora is going to need to migrate into the first-floor space, which means emergency management is going to slowly be crunched down and forced out because there's no vacant offices left on the first floor. I can get it to move. Okay. So this is the current configuration on the first floor, just for your understanding. Along the left side there, that's the front of the building. The office on the top left is the office that KDOT has temporarily moved into. It's a pretty big office. It has cubicles in it. Again, they are requesting two dedicated offices with doors that close, and we're still negotiating the details on that, whether we modify that office to compensate that or move them somewhere else on the first floor. The file storage right below that has been converted into an office a few years ago, and it's occupied. The workroom is still the copy room and has a large printer that can print large maps. So that thing is full. The director, the deputy director, and the planner all have offices. And then down the north hall, there's one office that is, Cody's in that office, and then our radio and satellite volunteers are in office number four. So again, that's full. On the south side of that comm center, or that EOC room, the big EOC room, are just restrooms and janitorial. There's no room for growth there. And then down in the far-right lower corner is the small general storage area that does exist in the building on the first floor. Everything else is occupied by a server room that is full of technology equipment that belong both to 911 and to information technology. And then on the north, on the, on the, on the top of that drawing, there's additional space, but that is all mechanical. There's no room in there to add or modify anything because it's all mechanical. It's all air filtration and generator equipment. We did have an architect look at this building to see if there's a potential to add on to the south, which would take up what parking exists on the south side. And we were initially, we were basically told by the architect that this building was not designed to break walls and add on. They didn't think it was really a viable solution to try to add on to this building as it exists today. So that's why we came to the point of, through the pandemic and looking at what the future holds, we believe that we need to relocate emergency management, and there's some caveats to that. So during the pandemic, we have no storage at that building. We had to ramp up really quick to try to bring in and supply protective equipment to all of our public safety partners in the county, all the municipalities, police departments, fire departments, REMS, school districts. There's a host of entities that we have to serve in conjunction with the state to make sure that they have protective equipment. to make sure that they have protective equipment. We ramped up quickly. We found a temporary space that had no heating, no running water, uh, nothing, uh, no amenities. Um, and that's what we moved into. We used 3,200 square feet on the first floor of that building, uh, for initial intake and for distribution. And then we also ended up down in the right, lower right hand corner, we occupied an additional almost 10,000 square feet for materials that were coming in. And as we depleted stuff on the first floor, this was the third floor, uh, we put it on a service elevator, moved it back down to the first floor and continued distribution. So we, we occupied, um, close to 13,000 square feet in order to maintain a rotating supply of materials coming in and out over that two-year period. We also had, uh, a need for additional space and we filled up Intrust Bank with materials. It was a one-time thing to provide supplies to small businesses, businesses in the area, largely small businesses that, uh, didn't have resources. Uh, you can see we filled up the arena on, at Intrust Bank Arena and moved a lot of supplies through there while we were running the other warehouse as well. And then we get into the health department side of this thing. Emergency Management and Health Department both looked at future needs. Both of them worked to have, um, initial plans drawn of what it might look like to have a new emergency management building with storage, onsite storage space, warehousing space and some drive-through space. Uh, Health Department looked at some, some, a parking lot across the street from their main building on Ninth Street as a space where they could do the public health, emergency preparedness warehouse and drive-through. Um, it's not big enough to do a joint, the property's not big enough to do a joint emergency management and health facility. If Tim wants to talk a little bit about health needs on this thing.
I think Rusty's got some slides later that show, um, some of the things that we went through during the pandemic. Um, we, we did look at the parking lot across the street from the Ninth Street location. It is possible with that footprint to, um, put in a facility, but you lose all the overflow parking that we have at that location. And it really crowds the neighborhood if we end up doing that because we'd have to run traffic through the neighborhood community streets to do that. So it's not an ideal street, it's not an ideal solution and it's one that, um, that's why we looked with Rusty at a joint facility.
So through the pandemic, uh, while Emergency Management was ramping up and trying to get supplies in, uh, Health Department was busy trying to provide some testing, drive-through testing and stuff. So on, on West Central at their facility, they set up an outdoor, started out with nothing and eventually erected some tents to try to provide some cover and shade for people working outdoors, uh, protection from the elements. Eventually they had to relocate. Uh, we spent quite a bit of money. Fortunately it was, I believe, CARE's money. Otherwise it would have been general fund dollars trying to acquire, uh, locations on, tens of thousands of dollars for, uh, to facilitate those types of drive-through testing and/or vaccinations and ended up out east and then ended up downtown at the transit facility. So there's a lot of movement around. We understand that in a major pandemic like that, we still might have to have additional, uh, temporary facilities that we utilize, but if we have an initial facility that has all the resources that we need onsite and we can start there without starting off initially trying to find places to, to ramp up and, and, uh, equip, things will be much better for us. Additionally, we want to maintain a reserve cash so that we're not in a situation we were, uh, in March of 2000 where we had nothing and the state had nothing and the feds had very little to nothing. Uh, currently we maintain about a 90-day rotation of supplies in our warehouse. Uh, those are rotating in and out. County, county departments are still, uh, requesting those materials and Kenji Brooks, our, uh, logistics guy for Emergency Management, uh, maintains the electronic, uh, supply inventory and maintains an electronic ordering system. So they're continuing to order, we're continuing to provide them and then we're backfilling those. We have a 90-day rotation. If we get into another situation where we need those supplies immediately, we can hopefully survive for about 90 days while we try to acquire if there's a shortage again. That includes stuff that would be relevant to the Health Department. They have some cash, I believe, in their facilities, uh, but we have some other stuff still in this warehouse. Uh, additionally, the Health Department has box trailers and other supplies that they need to, it's best if it's housed, uh, in a, in an environment where it's not subject to the, the elements all the time. Uh, Emergency Management also has trailers that they use to move supplies around. When we got into, well, in the time that I've been here, we began to try to track down supplies that had been dispersed across the county strategically placed in locations where they would be available in, in an event like this. Over time, uh, people did not manage inventory, people did not keep track of supplies. It took us a lot of time to track down those, determine what actually belonged to us, track down records of what we owned. And then once we got those trailers rounded up and started trying to use supplies, they were outdated, they were, most of it was trash. We ended up having to throw most of it away. So we have revamped, a lot of those trailers needed repairs. Uh, we've accomplished most all of those, uh, tasks, but again, our Emergency Management folks would like to have a location centralized where they can manage and, uh, manage that inventory. When we, a lot of this stuff is grant funded and whenever the, the state or the federal government comes in and wants to audit and see what, where the materials are that we used to buy that, uh, that was, that was a challenge for one of our new emergency managers was tracking down the records to try to track down the materials because historically records have not been kept and maintained. So we've, we've straightened all that out. We're in a good place now. We worked out all the logistics in the front part of the pandemic. We don't want to lose that momentum, nor do we want to lose, uh, the managed rotating supply so that we don't fall into that situation again. Again, and we'll get to some, to the cost and the picture in a minute, but, uh, last year we did apply for a Department of Defense grant. Uh, and Commissioner Dennis, uh, helped acquire the signature of the base commander, uh, to allow us to move forward with that. Uh, we were not successful with that grant. It is coming up again this year and I believe we're going to be working with our consultants to look back on that grant application, what was good, what wasn't good, and if we can improve, uh, for this cycle. Uh, Julie Stimson, our emergency manager, was also looking for funding opportunities through different grants. Uh, she did find a DHS FEMA grant for Emergency Operations Center grant, which sounds really promising, uh, but what she discovered was the 23 grant. States had to have had projects already pre-submitted in some form or fashion, which we're trying to understand. Uh, and only those jurisdictions that had pre-approved projects were eligible this year. Kansas had no allocation. It was several, it was a large multimillion dollar figure. Kansas had no allocation in that grant, uh, opportunity. So we're trying to better understand how to get into that program and see if there's some way that we can become part of that, maybe reaching out through, uh, the Senator on the Appropriations Committee and, and our lobbyist in, uh, Washington to understand that grant better and how we get on the list there. So, um, and again, it was on the CIP last year. We put it on watch list. We had no funding and this year we did not put it on CIP because we're going to look for other fun, funding opportunities. Uh, now this is, we have a architectures rendering that we used last year for the grant process. I think this is a pretty close, I think, I think the concept is pretty close. I think talking to Mr. Kaufman, we both believe that there are some, some adjustments that need to be made to this, uh, some additional, uh, office space that wasn't included last year. Uh, but this is a joint facility for both health and for, for health preparedness. Adrian's staff that are dedicated to health emergency preparedness, uh, and then emergency management. Um, it has drive-through capabilities as well as warehousing. I think honestly, we were probably a little bit short on the square footage and the warehousing and drive-through space. And again, I think we were probably a little bit short on the office space and that structure that we have designed here. Specifically the drive-through capability, you can see the off-road, uh, weave behind the building. Uh, that's something that's important that we need a site. Number, number one, we don't have a firm site. We have a couple of county properties that we indicated we might be able to use when we applied for that grant. Uh, one of them is up north. Um, it's, it'll be a tight fit for a structure like this. Uh, the other one was way out in western Cedric County where I don't think it's practical given, um, the type of usage that we have for people from the eastern part of the county and Wichita to drive way out to Lake Afton anytime we have an event. I think we need to do a little bit more research on land and do some land acquisition to make this more viable. And so we have a firm understanding where this is going to go and that it will fit and work the way it's supposed to. But we at least have, we have a pretty close rendering here and some more detail, I didn't put them in slides, but, uh, we do have a concept. We just need to tweak it a little bit and I think we need to start land acquisition if we have, if we're serious about trying to, to do this for the future. Um, and to get to the bottom line, uh, calculations last year were, land acquisition was 1.7 and the building was a little over 10 million. The total estimated cost for everything was about 14 million. And then with inflationary costs, it's up to about 14.5 this year is what the estimated cost is as it was drawn. And like I said, we probably need to make some minor adjustments to the drawing before we move forward. Anything else to add on this? Anything from facilities or? So with that, um, that is today's vision of the 911 center, just so you're aware. Destruction is underway and remodeling will begin this week and it will last for about three months. So with that, if you have any questions, Tim or I or Tanya or Lindsay will try to answer those questions.
Lindsay, this will be a bonded project?
Okay. I will speak up. Oh, thanks. Save the day. Um, the hope is to get grant funding to pay for the vast majority of this. Um, I think what we will need is some direction from the commission. Uh, if, if we can't secure a grant, Rusty identified too, um, if that is something that we would want to look at bond funding or to the extent cash becomes available in the general fund for a one-time purpose, that's an acceptable use too. We could do a combination of grant and cash funding or a combination of grant, cash and bond funding. I think we just need to understand the priority level from the commission. We need to have that support, um, for the grant process. And then once we have some answers back on that, then we'll have that important question of depending on how much grant funding we're able to access, how do we want to fill the rest or, or do we want to, um, for the project as it's, looks today or if we get direction from the commission to change it somehow.
It, it seems like, particularly on the Department of Defense grant last year and some of this other FEMA money that Julie's looking at, that the, the grantors are seeking shovel-ready kinds of projects. That's why I think that land acquisition or land identification for this is important as we go through and we'll hear from our consultants on this too, but that seemed to be a stumbling block for us last year on the, on the defense grant that they wanted, they wanted a site located and shovel-ready and that's, that's the challenge.
Okay. So can, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, let's get, so half of that building is for preparedness for an event, pandemic, whatever. And the other half will be used daily in the current comm care type activity? So it would be?
So the building, the building would be used daily, um, for emergency preparedness, for all of the activities, emergency management currently is engaged in. I mean, they're supporting volunteer groups, they're revamping CERT, uh, which is community support for disaster, for search and rescue and for, uh, supporting Riverfest and lighting and for any kind of disasters. Uh, they have a canine unit that they support. They have the radio and, uh, the radio group that they support. Um, and then the warehousing, the logistics, the supplies that they, that go along with CERT and with, uh, preparedness activities. I mean, they're using the building daily. Currently, the Emergency Operations Center is used for a lot of training activities by a lot of different departments, um, and a lot of meetings that, uh, our state level meetings come in here. Uh, the Homeland Security Group that meets South Central Region, they come down to Wichita to meet in that facility. So the facility is going to be used on a daily basis. Uh, a portion of it will be dedicated to Tim and Adrian's, uh, health preparedness.
The Health Department use would be more episodic when, if entered, they'll, they'll use it for training exercises, things like that to prepare in anticipation of events, but it would be space available for events that happen if we have to respond to, um, another pandemic, another health emergency in the community. There are lots of different models of response and that could, that having a fixed location would be ideal for many of those responses. Last pandemic, we were dealing with two different functions, the testing function and then the vaccination function. Normally that's not going, unless that's the new normal, we won't be having to find two spaces like that. In the event that we do need two spaces and the next time we've at least got one secured, we moved our testing function, I think either five or six times. We moved our vaccination function multiple times as well. And so, um, that takes away from service delivery as we're moving stuff around and chasing space and that sort of thing. So if we could secure one fixed site space that we know is available for these types of things, then we're better off, um, any event that we need to find more.
Chairman, I might have missed this. How big is this building?
Do you have a square footage on it? I was thinking this was about a 15,000 square foot facility, um, at least. We're, I talked about the temporary warehousing space where we used almost 13,000 square feet. All of that was single layer on the ground. We didn't really have, um, we didn't really have, uh, forklift availability and we didn't have shelving. So in this facility, in the, in the storage area, we would intend to have shelving, we would stack too high, we would have, uh, forklift access and capability on a regular basis. We could better utilize the space upward instead of outward.
And we can, you can let me know, on the grant side of this, when, when is that application? Is it a continual application? We can submit this at any point in time or is this?
So, so the, the grant that I'm familiar with is that DCIP grant that, um, Commissioner Dennis assisted us with getting the, uh, commander's signature on last year. That has a defined due date this year. We have our first meeting to discuss that grant next Tuesday and, um, according to our consultants, they think that they have a pretty good strategy for us to use this year. Last year we kind of threw it together pretty quickly. Um, they got some lessons learned back from DOD. They got, um, some other feedback from other grantors who have been, or grantees who have been successful at getting the grants. And so I think we feel a lot more optimistic about our opportunity to get that grant this time, but we would be looking at the fall before we would have an announcement for that.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the, the square footage on that was about 21,000 square feet.
Commissioner Dennis?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I was aware that we were going to be trying to submit for this grant again. And so last week I actually had an opportunity to, at a social event with the wing commander and his key staff. And so I brought it up to him, would you be willing to support us again this year? And I said, absolutely, because, uh, in the case of a huge disaster such as all the damage we saw recently, uh, east of us came through and, and had significant damage in McConnell, they would still rely on the, uh, community to help them in the initial stages of that emergency. So, uh, they are definitely supportive. They said, just get it to them and they get it signed and back to you. So I've already worked that for you.
Okay. And thanks for your help on that. That's much appreciated. Commissioner Hal?
So, so out of this 21,000 square feet, how much of this is warehouse approximately?
How much is warehouse? I was thinking, we were talking around 9,000 square feet warehousing, but I'm not going to, that's what we initially talked about. I'm sorry. 8,000 square feet from the back row.
So on the 90 days, 90 days of supply, is that 90 days of what we would normally use? We just buy it, store it and like cycle the stock across the shelf? We, we take the old stuff and use it first and then put the new stuff on the backside? 90 days, 90 days normal supply or is this 90 days supply during a COVID pandemic?
It's normal supply. It, it changes year to year. So it's, it's 90 days of, of what our burn rate is.
Our normal burn rate versus a pandemic burn rate?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, it's mainly the things that are gloves and we're, we're not keeping, some of the things that we used during the pandemic. We are, we're not, we're not keeping because they're not being used at the same rate.
And we use like a hundred times more during the pandemic than we normally, we normally use. So are we stocking up for a pandemic rate or a normal rate we use on day-to-day basis?
So our, our, our stock has changed from year to year and we've gotten to this sort of normal operating, we've got to this normal operating. of normal operating, we've got to this normal operating annual year-to-year rate. We did have a surge during the COVID pandemic. We didn't have any space to put anything, so we used the InTrust Bank Arena. That would be surge capacity, but we didn't have anywhere identified to store any of these items when they were delivered. We also didn't have loading dock spaces. We didn't have forklifts. We didn't have forklift operators. And, and that would be the type of facility we would need if we were to ramp up for any kind of disaster and if we had items coming from Strategic National Stockpile or any type of incident aside from pandemic-related supplies.
So let me, let me answer my own question, make sure you agree. We were going to, we're going to use the supplies we're stocking. We're not going to throw them away. We're going to, we're going to stock what we need and over 90 days, we're going to use that up. So we're not wasting taxpayer money by stocking stuff we're going to throw away.
Correct, yes. It's a constantly revolving supply of stock. I mean, last year in 2022 alone, we delivered over a million pieces of PPE to all of our community partners. But we have to receive all those items and right now those pallets are being dropped in the middle of the street on Third Street. We have to find a forklift driver. Facilities has been providing us a forklift driver to move it from the street and into the current warehouse that we have.
Well, again, the reason I'm asking is because when, when the pandemic started, we talked about March of 2020, we didn't have anything. I agree, but the pandemic was ramping up and manufacturers were ramping up. Our response was ramping up. We, we didn't, we didn't have a, the height of the pandemic. We had, you know, InTrust Bank Arena, for example, doing its thing. That's not where we started, obviously. We ramped up to that. And I guess my, one of the things I would reflect on here is, let me just commend those involved in making decisions. So Lindsay and Manager and others, Adrian Byrne, others, you know, we, we pivoted numerous times, reasonably pivoted, to manage the, the work that was needed to be done, the space that we found, spaces in the community that worked. I think at some point we even had the, the Kansas National Guard or whatever was assisting us at some point. That large tent that we had at the, on Central Health, Health Clinic there, I assume that came from the National Guard. We didn't buy, we didn't have that in our, in our, where, in our, where'd that come from?
We leased it.
We leased it?
Yeah.
You know, you could lease a tent like that, but that's, that's pretty neat. I guess my point is we, you know, it's hard to plan for a pandemic. We, even if we did plan for a pandemic, I think we would probably plan it wrong. Until you're in the, until you're in the middle of it, you don't know exactly what you need and where you need it and what you need exactly. And so there's lots of decisions happening during the process where you're, you're responding and pivoting to the daily, you know, daily information that you have. And so I think that it's great to plan ahead, but I don't know if we want a warehouse with a million, you know, million, whatever it was you said, a million piles of stuff.
Million pieces, yeah.
Million pieces. That's obviously not where we, we need to plan for, we don't need to stock that up today. That would be, that would be unreasonable. But I, I reflect on the, you know, I was deployed to Desert Shield, Desert Storm, and when we ended up in the desert, we used an abandoned hotel, didn't even have electricity or water. We lived in a hotel for a month. We didn't have water or electricity because we didn't have anything else. We pivoted and I, you know, the, the reality is we should plan ahead and have procedures and policies. We, we plan them and practice them, but to have a brick and mortar building that's going to be perfectly suited to a, a future pandemic, I don't know if we can possibly guess that perfectly. So the, the health, the, the health clinic, health department, I agree, that, that building's pretty tired and I don't think it works well where it's at. I think that needs to be updated, obviously. I think we need to have some warehouse space that makes sense. I think we need to have some of these things, the training, the training facility makes sense, but to plan for a pandemic with, you know, the, the largest capacity we could possibly ever think we would ever need, I'm not sure I would support that plan necessarily because we have buildings throughout the community that we could use. We have, you know, again, we probably pivoted three, four, five times during this pandemic and where we did vaccinations, where we did testing. So at the end of the day, I think that we would, we would do that in the future if that happened again. So I'm not much sure I want to see the entire facility as it's been presented today. I think we should do parts of it, but maybe not the entire thing.
I would just say that, again, these are lessons learned from the past, not just the pandemic itself. And this is an all hazards approach. It's not just about a virus or a fungus or a bacteria. It's about drought, wildfires, tornadoes, hellstorms, floods. It's about the gamut of those hazards that we face in, in this region of Kansas. And what we saw in the past was when the CERT team was active and before it kind of fell off and John is, John and Julie are rebuilding that program so that we have a good core of volunteers. But supplies for CERT were spread across the county. They were stored in fire stations in a basement. They were stored elsewhere and they deteriorated because nobody was maintaining. We had health supplies from 9/11 and times previous, 20 years ago, when we, when we stocked up for biological events and have white suits and police cars. Those are the types of things that we had stuffed in these emergency management and health trailers that were stashed around, around the county and nobody managed those and all of those materials deteriorated and became stored trash. A facility like this won't meet the needs of a major event and we would have to pivot and maybe find additional space, but we would at least have the initial supply of fresh materials that we're rotating in and out so that they don't deteriorate and they don't die. And it gives us 60 to 90 days to find suppliers that can get us materials in before we have nothing. So we're trying not to be extravagant here, but we're learning from lessons in the past. We want to be prepared enough that we don't get caught short, but we don't want to overdo to where we have materials that deteriorate and rot and get thrown in the trash and a waste of taxpayer money. So trying to find that balance.
The hardest part of 2020 was we couldn't find PPEs for EMS and fire people and share. And I think that's the goal here is to keep this cycle going to where those entities burn through normally N95 masks or gloves or aprons routinely. And we keep a stock there to where at least if, when we have a major event, that we can at least get our people equipped who are out on the front lines and having, they can't stay home, they can't avoid contact, they've got to go into contact. That was the hardest part of 2020, having EMS and fire take N95 masks, put them in a brown paper sack, put them on a shelf for seven days because we couldn't find any new ones and we had no new ones in stock. I think that's the whole goal of what we're trying to avoid with this kind of facility where we move those things through always. And if we could have just bought 60 or 90 days back in 2020, it'd have got us past the hump because it eased up over time. But there was that immediate run worldwide on those types of commodities and we just couldn't find them. But by end of summer, that was easing up. So I think that's the whole goal.
Beyond an epidemic or a pandemic, other natural disasters, John, you know, we need to have other supplies available to help with tornado events and those things too. And that's something that would also fit here.
And, and to Tom's point, you know, we have many departments throughout the county that order PPE and before the pandemic, they were ordering individually. Fire department would order their own supplies, EMS, so on and so forth, health department. And we consolidated that all under emergency management. Now we're ordering the common PPE items that all the departments are using and we're stocking a 90-day supply of that. And then we, all those departments replenish their supply from our master supply, if that makes, if that makes any sense. And then we revolve that stock continually. And to speak on the building, Rusty's correct, it's going to be a multi-purpose, multi-use facility, both emergency management, the EOC will be there, will have warehousing space for not only PPE, but generators, lighting. We have a lot of trailers that we have that, and vehicles that need storage as well. They just sit outside in the weather. And as Rusty had stated before, when Julie and I arrived here, we had stuff strewn all over the county and we didn't even know where half the stuff was when we arrived. So.
I think the, I think the multi-per, what you're saying on multi-purpose is the original assumption was this is for COVID preparedness and another pandemic. And I think that's a very important point that needs to be considered, the multi. I think our community expects us to be better prepared for the next disaster or next pandemic or next whatever hits us across the, the bow. So, but this, there's a lot of other considerations, financial considerations coming, admin building. There's a lot of, there's a budget deficit. There's, there's issues. So I think this grant process, I think is really, really, really important to make sure that we can, I, I see the need, but I, I, I think this grant is going to be very important to making sure we can actualize this. So, so maybe you can give us an update after your meeting next week, but I certainly see the need.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Commissioner Beatty made part of my point, but when we're planning for an emergency, we need to look at what gamut of emergencies we're going to have to plan for, not just a pandemic. We, we can all second guess what we did during the pandemic and just plan on how to do that. But as Commissioner Howell mentioned, we pivoted a lot of times, but we pivoted because we didn't have a facility like this. So we start out over at the, at the health department on Central and then eventually put up a tent. And then we went over to an armory and then we went over to a bus barn when it was well below zero and our people were freezing to death. And then we went over to the InTrust Bank Arena and then we went over to, to the old library. And we pivoted all those times because we did not have a facility to be able to do what we needed to do that was multi-purpose, that we could face all of the different kinds of disasters that we might look at in the future. So I think working through this grant process and getting a facility that emergency management and the health department can work out of, that can prepare, prepare us for a variety of emergencies that may come up in the future is the way to go. And I think that's what you're all talking about. So I appreciate that.
And a good example would be Butler County built a similar facility during the, during the pandemic, multi-purpose facility with a lot of drive-through spaces, storage, loading dock.
Tom Stoltz and I went over and toured that and we've seen what they've built and their emergency management is also in that facility.
Correct.
Okay, so you need to feel comfortable to, if we find some land, then you're feeling comfortable about the grant?
Yeah, I think the only, I agree that the, the grant application is critical. My only heart room is if there, if the grant continues, and we'll find out more from the consultant next week, but if they're saying, using the word shovel-ready and land acquisition site-specific, we may have to tackle that. We, we may have to tackle the acquisition of land or get more serious about pinpointing what county ground we own currently that would house this kind of building. Rusty went over and it's either Station 8, EMS Post 8, up at 53rd and the bypass or Afton. That's where it's at. And of those two, clearly Station 8 would be preferable, at least it's close to the urban population. I think, I agree with Rusty, asking people to drive all the way to, to Afton as much, whether you're dealing with an F5 tornado or wind damage or pandemic. So, I mean, that's, that's the only point. Go ahead, Lindsay. That's the only point of discussion I see.
Well, so last year we had this conversation, if you remember, at the commission retreat and you all had asked for some additional information to come back. And so that additional information came back, we applied for the grant, we didn't get the grant. I think to the points that I'm hearing today about trying to be shovel-ready and get this thing moving forward, if we're going to start looking for land, it probably makes sense to go ahead and do a CIP amendment to at least get this authorized so that when we're ready to go and make some purchases, our folks have that capability. So if there's general support for this pending the grant, I think it might be helpful to get this codified and put into the CIP so that when we have the funding, we're ready to move. If there's a general consensus to support at least that initial part of the phase, that would be my suggestion for next step.
Okay. Probably consensus is?
Okay. I'm not hearing any strenuous no's, so we'll move forward with that.
Again, I'm supportive of getting the land. I think that makes sense. And I think conceptually, we can, we, we're not into, we're not into the detailed phase here. So we're going to see drawings and we're going to build ham and haw about whether it's right-sized or whatever. That's a future discussion. So I think the, the first step of getting land and, and maybe initiating some engineering to find out what that would look like is, is certainly reasonable. I think we're not going to pull a trigger on this, on the project for, for the foreseeable future. We don't know when that will happen. We'll try the grant and if it doesn't work, we'll talk other options. Thanks.
All right. Rusty, thanks for the work on this. And Jonathan, thanks for being here to help as well.
Okay.
Next up.
Okay, morning commissioners. I would like to give you an update on legislative issues. Yesterday we had our nominal meeting with Jason and Jessica and Chairman Meitzner, Commissioner Howell, Tom, Lindsay, Mike Papoun, Justin Wagner and Adrian Clark were all in that meeting. Because of the two bills that I'm going to bring up, I also bring up those names, so I'm going to lay on them a little bit as we get into the discussion. The two bills that I want to bring up are Senate Bill 252, and you are familiar with this bill. That is the Government Competition Bill. The reason I bring this up is because I received an email from KAC asking for urgent action on this. They were asking that we either contact House members or House committee members just to, to provide some input and opposition to this bill. I asked Jason for his input on that and he, of course, said that they are, of course, talking to House members on that, but if we wanted to provide input on that, it wouldn't hurt. And let me go back a little bit. Just a reminder, this bill provides exemption to businesses. It provides property tax and sales tax exemptions to the businesses that compete with government-owned and operated facilities in childcare, entertainment, exercise, health club, recreation and restaurant industries. So we had a full discussion on that yesterday for quite some time. And again, he said, you know, Jason said he is providing opposition to House members, but if we wanted to provide any opposition to this, it wouldn't hurt. So I think Adrian is here, Adrian Clark, if you want to give any input on that, you're welcome to. And then of course, everyone that was in that meeting is here as well if they want to provide any input.
While Adrian's up here, repeat those industries?
Sure.
That are affected. If, if the government's in this business, then others would be property and sales tax exempted.
Yeah. And I just, I might just also state that there was an amendment, this is only for in cities. They took out counties out of the bill. So it's only for government-owned and operated entities in cities, not in counties. So it's those that have childcare, entertainment, exercise, health club, recreation and restaurant industries.
All right.
All right. Hello, good morning. First of all, when we say within a city, what we're talking about is the geographical scope. So previously in the original iteration of the bill, it said if this private business existed and then the county operated a similar business that offered this service or good within the county as a whole, then that private business would then be tax exempt. Now it's taken it to a smaller level and it's only specific to within a city. So if, instead of the entire county, if for instance, a private business operates within Wichita and then the government operates a similar or offers a similar good or service on their property within the city of Wichita, then they would get that exemption. But it can't go between cities. So it can't just be there in Wichita and a government in, let's say Valley Center, offers something similar and they're automatically tax exempt. They have to be within the same city within the county. They also amended the bill to clarify that this exemption would only be if the government began offering the competing activity after the private business was already in existence and offering the same activity. One thing that we talked about on our call yesterday as an example would be the Seasons Event venue, which is run by the city of Wichita at Watson Park. The reason we're concerned about this is because that is a very new venue. It's marketed as a wedding and event venue. And despite the county having no involvement in it, in the planning or operation of it, the county would see a direct impact because of it. The existence of this new venue would mean that all prior existing wedding and event venues within the city of Wichita would then be exempt from those taxes, which means that the county would see a loss in tax revenue because of that. And this is just one example, but it's one that comes to mind because of how new that that venue is. And when we were on the call yesterday, it was recommended that if we are going or the board is going to take a position on this bill, that we use a specific example such as that venue. The bill is worrisome because the county can do what it can to not compete with private business, but we cannot control the actions of smaller government entities within the county, which would then directly impact the tax revenue that the county would receive.
And that's tax revenue that the cities also would not get?
Yes.
And the school districts?
Mm-hmm, correct. Mm-hmm. Correct.
Quickly, let me make sure I understand it completely. Let's take the zoo, for example. We just had a grand opening a year or so ago with the 50th anniversary. We now operate a nice bistro over there. If we look at the 2500 Master Plan, we're thinking about putting a hotel out there. All of these things sound to me like they'd be new and be competing against businesses. So does that mean that all of that is going to be an issue?
So my understanding is that when it comes to the zoo, we're slightly less concerned because it is technically in the unincorporated area of the county, meaning it doesn't fall within specific city.
With that expiration place, the land under that belongs to the city. And we got quite an entertainment venue there.
Right. And it would depend on if the private business that is applying for tax exemption status existed before or after the expiration place started offering the service that they're saying they're competing with.
Can you remind me, have we been able to quantify local impact?
No, in all honesty, it's it's I would argue impossible to to know precisely who would be considered substantially, you know, performing the same type of service for all of those cities, who would be considered, you know, the competition, how long those folks have been in operation. Because as Adrian pointed out, if we were in existence before, we're fine. If we open it afterwards, then that's where there starts to be that competition. And so we don't have any idea how long these event venues or any of these things or gyms or restaurants, any of those things have been in existence across all 20 cities in the county. So I anticipate it would be significant if you take all restaurants out of commission.
And very.
But I have no idea how to tell you what that that impact would be.
Well, weighing weighing the risk of us formally in opposition to this, I Commissioner Howell, we wrote that call to what.
Yeah, I think that one of the biggest risks probably would be if the city has a food service, then the restaurants become exempt. That would be citywide. So imagine somehow the government is perceived to provide a cafeteria at their city building. Any restaurant that would come in before that may be old enough that it existed before that would be potentially exempt. What about someone mentioned, I know Cedric County Zoo is in the unincorporated. That makes sense to me that that would be a reason that this wouldn't be a problem for the Cedric County Zoo. But would a hotel hotel would not be part of that list of childcare and, you know, all those things we listed?
It depends on how the term recreation is interpreted. And that's one of the issues with the bill is how broad this language is.
What about swimming pools, then? That'd be another potential because that's entertainment, I would think.
Yeah, entertainment, recreation.
Exploration Place has their their dome theater, for example, another good example.
They also offer daycare services.
And if we offer daycare services for our own employees, if, I don't know, it's been discussed a little bit, would that be, you know, I know we're county, but if a if a government body did that for their employees, would that be?
If it's our employees only, my read on that was we're safe. It's when it's open to the public that it becomes troublesome because that's when it's true competition. Do you agree with that?
It would depend the so when a business goes to apply for the certificate for tax exempt status, the law would be liberally construed in their favor for whether or not they should be given that status based on if it's government competition or not.
One thing, and I'll say this also, the it was mentioned yesterday that the hospitality, the restaurant hospitality lobbyists were not necessarily supportive of this bill, which I think it was they're not they're not proponents of the bill. So it was the health clubs, I think, initially that started the started the bill. It kind of morphed into these other other things, but the Restaurant Association does not seem to be supportive of the bill. That, I think, is a very interesting point. Other thing I would mention here is we talk about lost revenue to the county, but there are, again, I think a bigger impact could be to schools and the state. State would lose revenue as well. State sales tax, state state property 21.5 mils to the state, which goes to schools, plus school school levies, their own taxes in Derby at 66 mils they charge. That would be an impact to schools. So again, I think it's much it's much larger than just, you know, a county. It's the total impact of the state of Kansas is is enormous. And I think we need to need to know that. So they don't have a fiscal note on the state level. They don't have a fiscal note on this, even for themselves. So.
Right. And that is because it's so hard to tell what that impact would be.
And so Jason thought it'd be advantageous for us to weigh in in opposition. Yep. So I guess we can write something up if have used the example you talked about.
I I do have a draft prepared that really is more just a revision of our previous submitted written opposition when this was in the Senate Committee. But it doesn't.
So can we have that for tomorrow till we vote on it publicly?
It's too late.
Too late.
They're going to adjourn on Thursday. I mean, if you want to get this, they're probably conflicted on this today and they're going to adjourn on Thursday. So waiting until tomorrow, then sending this tomorrow is is we're burning through the time we have. We really need to. This is an open meeting. Why can't we talk about this now and give our our agreement to this right now?
As long as I don't also hear what it says, I'd say support. I let the chairman sign that and send it off.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the bad news. Thanks for the bad news.
Okay. The other thing we talked about yesterday was Senate Concurrent Resolution 1610. And so under this amendment, this increases in the increases in assessed valuation would be limited to no more than 3% per year. The exception to that would be new construction. And so we had a very robust and thorough conversation about that yesterday. And so I would like to lean on Justin Wagner a little bit on this to talk about this a little bit more.
Good morning, Commissioners. Justin Wagner, Deputy County Counselor. I think I'll start off by mentioning that, yeah, Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1610, it would be a proposed amendment to the Kansas Constitution. The Senate approved it 26 to 14. Of course, if this would go forward through through the Kansas mechanisms, the voters would have to approve it. So it wouldn't just go into effect if, you know, upon governor approval or override of a governor veto like a normal bill. It would have to actually go out to a vote. It's worth noting that the current standard in the Kansas Constitution on property valuation, and I know we've got the county appraiser in here, so he knows this really well, that the legislature shall provide a uniform and equal basis evaluation and rate of taxation of all properties subject to taxation. Now, ahead of that, it does say, except as otherwise here and after specifically provided. Right now, there's no exception like this that sets a cap like Tanya just mentioned about the 3% cap. This Senate Concurrent Resolution would propose to put in place a 3% year-to-year valuation increase cap so that property valuations would not be any higher than that unless, and it lists exceptions, one would be new construction or improvements have been made to the property. If the class or subclass of the property would change for assessment rate purposes, if the property becomes disqualified from exemption, I'm not entirely certain what that means. If the property is first listed as escaped or omitted property, which would have escaped taxation for one reason or another, if the legal description of the land, lot, or parcel would change, and also if the title of the property is transferred, so if you had a new owner. And and I think the the thing to know about this bill, there's there's potential concerns. I mean, this is this is a, I should say, the resolution. This is something that I don't think we've discussed at all before to this point. And so I'll go through a few of those. The first is that it it takes a uniform and equal approach that's expressly stated in the Kansas Constitution and turns it into one that is unequal and non-uniform. And so over time, what you could see is you could have two very different homes, for example. You could have a a nice, you know, home that's owned by the same owner for 10 or 20 years that only has the 3% cap on value. You could have a much less nice home or not as nice home that changes ownership a few times and they end up being very different homes, would really be assessed currently under the current standards of very different values, but based on this artificial cap of 3%, they would be assess taxes at the same value, which seems unequal because, you know, under our current system, we're used to valuing property at its fair market value and having all else being equal, the properties, you know, assessed and taxed based on their value, not based on whether how long you've owned the property and that kind of a consideration. Also, it could lead to tamping down the demand for new housing. I think a lot of folks, whether homeowners or business owners, would be reticent to leave their current property if they have this 3% cap that they've built up, essentially have been paying a kind of a deflated tax value on their property. And why would you step away from that and step into a new home where you wouldn't have that protection? And so it could end up impacting, I think, to a negative degree, the new housing developments, potentially new commercial developments, things along those lines. Similar to that also, because the bill has an exemption for if you make improvements to a property, you would think that this could also lead homeowners and and business owners to be hesitant to make renovations and improvements to their properties because you wouldn't just have the cost of the renovation or improvement, then your property could jump up drastically in one year and all future years would be based on on that higher value. And so it could act as a disincentive to property owners doing that. And so I think those are all things to know. I mean, it it would be, I mean, obviously, whether it's Cedric County, other municipalities could always increase their mill levies. Obviously, that's not a very popular thing to do, but it it does create an artificial cap of 3% when whether it's the cost of living, consumer price index, or the cost of doing business for municipality may certainly exceed 3%. But I I will say, I think the intent of this resolution is to keep values so they don't get so high on folks, you know, set a cap. Because I understand that, and I think that at a staff level, Cedric County staff understands that, you know, value property values have increased a lot, which also means that their tax bills have been increasing a lot as well. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you've got on this. Again, we haven't provided any testimony, any opposition support, you know, any statements on this resolution to this point.
I might just add, Commissioners, this failed on the Senate side, but I know that you all received a call from Senator McGinn to to keep a watch on this. So that's correct. And and so that's why we bring it up.
Well, thanks for that information. Obviously, we'll be watching it closely, I think.
The arm twisting is happening right now. And I understand there's another version of this that's 5%. Have you heard that?
I I don't. I think it was at the is that 1604, Commissioner?
I don't know.
I believe that may be it. I I think there is a competing one, Commissioner.
So the three.
5009.
I'm sorry.
HCR 5009.
5009, okay.
Yeah, Mark, do you?
Thank you.
Would you want to you need to want to comment on that, Mark? Or plus, what is if the state, if your bosses are taking a position on this one way or another?
I think we've all taken positions on this.
Assume the position.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Clark, County Appraiser. I don't I don't like this legislation. The Director opposes it. The Kansas County Appraisers Association has opposed it. We've all spoke to it. This smacks of California Proposition 13, and if you look at what's happened to the school districts in other cities, you don't want anything to do with this. Caps appraise value at 3%, properties will not be valued at fair market value. It won't be uniform and equal. Think about this. Industry uses the appraised value. Insurance, banks, Zillow, Redfin, they have auto valuation models. They all use our data. So that has a major impact on the real estate market and its major players. When you start messing around with that, you lose your ground, your foundation. Also, something to think about is FEMA. You have a storm, storm damage. I mean, when it comes down to it, FEMA uses the certified appraised value. And when they're doing that, they're trying to determine eligibility so that they can further determine, you know, compensation. And so that that smacks the the property owner right in the face again. I know people don't like increased values, but we're we're reporting on what the market is doing. That 3% is just a statutory number and nobody can explain where it comes from except for legislators saying that's the number. Also, low-growth areas and declining areas will suffer due to inequities. We will be able, we won't be able to make adjustments to those properties to adequately compensate for those inadequacies. If the market turns bad, what does the county appraiser do? I didn't hear anything in in that legislation or read anything out legislation that says the county appraiser has the discretion not to do 3%. Or does it or does it does he have the discretion to do something else to make it lower? It's 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 very ambiguous. You just don't know exactly what they're doing. So if the county appraiser doesn't have that discretion and the Director, what authority does he have? Does our ratio studies and compliance mean anything anymore? If that being the case, what exactly does the appraised value mean? Also, your residential, commercial, and agricultural groups, some of them have already voiced opposition to this legislation. I believe the Farm Bureau has spoken, your Grain Elevator Association, some of your homeowner associations have have also voiced concern about this. If you're not keeping up the market, you are creating inequities that will lead, and this the Director and I have spoke about this, will lead to statewide reappraisal by the end of the decade. And I know that people don't like property tax, but this is a three-legged stool state. You've got the sales, you've got income, and you've got property tax. And we've already seen an instance of what happens when you try to take one of them away. It's not good. This less this legislation will have detrimental impacts on our budget and the county's ability to provide the necessary services to the citizens of Cedric County. If values are capped, levies will increase and there are no caps on taxes. This legislation fixes nothing and it only leads to increased and larger problems.
Okay, Mark, thanks for that spirited comment.
Before you go, can I ask? Can you go before you go?
Hey, Mark, hold on just a second. Jim's good.
You said something about Zillow. Can you say that again? You said that pretty quickly.
Yes. Zillow and Redfin and and those types of real estate firms that report on values and so forth, provide services to property owners, basically, they get our data. And remember, there was a lawsuit not too long ago, was across the nation, was Zillow. And they came to us in Cedric County, they went to other places, too, and they wanted our data. There was a gap between our values and theirs, and they started using our characteristics and so forth, and that really came down.
So that's I did not know that. That's actually interesting to know that. But what about financing? If someone wants to go get a second mortgage or gets, you know, refinance their home, do they look at the tax value, the valuation from the county as a qualifier for that for that loan?
Yes.
Okay. What about insurance? What about insurance? If they say has a house fire and they think about what the maximum outlay for the insurance company would probably be based on this as well?
That is true.
And, okay, that's that's maybe think about loss. I think we should send out some testimony on this as well, Chairman.
Real quick, as I remember during the Halloween flood, the Dell was flooded pretty badly and FEMA bought all those properties out, but they brought it and bought those properties out at the appraised value, not what the market value was.
That is true.
Is it concern the homeowners all of to keep their property appraised values down, but if there's ever a disaster, that's what the FEMA is going to come in and pay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for the, we'll watch that one closely.
Thank you.
I'm sure. That'd probably be making the news, I think. But, okay.
Yeah, and I'll work with Adrian to get that that opposition put together to get sent up on 252.
What about this one? Should we not send some testimony on this?
Sure, can.
Let me show you.
It seems like it's really morphing. It seems like it's really morphing. I, I don't really know. If the real estate, I mean, the appraisers have already sent, and others are doing opposition, I kind of think we're going to let that cook on its own a little bit.
I did send WAPA a text this morning, informing them to watch this bill, but I haven't got any back from them yet.
Good.
That's all staff has to, today.
I was going to talk to Wes this afternoon, or right after this as well.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. We've been presented with the real offices are here. Do you have anything that you want to bring up or share?
Do you want us?
Go ahead, yeah, come on up, Kelly. And we have HR, Human Resources is here, do you have anything?
Not today.
You building the daycare center yet?
What's that?
You building a babysitter center for daycare?
We'll, we'll see if we can't get a microphone mobile back.
All right. I'm not going to be spirited like the appraiser did.
Okay. No, I just wanted to let you guys know that the VA has invited us to their Benefits Resource Fair, which is April 15th, from 10 to 3:00, and it's at Town West Square. So we're going to be there with an informational booth, so we just wanted to let you guys know.
That's great.
Since you guys hit on legislative stuff, a couple things for the Clerk's Office that you guys need to be aware of. We had a bill that we, I was working on, that would have the state continue to pay the mailer for the R and R notice. When that got to, and passed the House, 114 to 7, when it got to the Senate, Karen Tyson's Committee, it changed. First of all, they changed it and basically struck that out and gave us one-year extension. They then added on changes of the R and R letter, and some information on that, we're still trying to figure out, work through. They added a section filling with the Appraiser's Office, that I had not really dived into to know exactly what that affects. That passed the Senate, Swiss and Conference Committee report, and last night, they decided to add the local sales, or the food sales tax includes removing the local portion that we need to protest against or go against. Apparently, that's now in my bill. So something needs to be on your radar, it's now in my bill, 2002. So J. Hall sent out a memo on that last night, that they now added that in my bill for Conference Committee report. So I have already talked to a handful of people, I don't know what's going to happen with that. The people I talked to in the House say by adding that into it is going to kill the bill, since obviously so many counties are against having the local part removed, so. But that's now in my bill. Oh, and then the other thing that happened just shortly is the, yeah, the Election Commissioner's already gone, but she will be having a presidential primary next year, so that got reconsidered.
Yeah, we heard that was probably in the works, March, I think, or something.
Yeah, they voted it down yesterday, and then they reconsidered, passed it by 30 votes today.
Okay. Randy?
Good morning. Good morning. So I've spoke at Commissioner Dennis's and Lopez's cab meetings, and I just want to say thank you for letting me come do that. So it's tax season, tax bills have gone out, we're starting to see people come in and make their payments, other ways they can make their payments besides doing it online, sending in the mail, or coming to the office here at Ruffin Building. I might have a tax clerk stationed at both tag offices, so they can go into a tag office and make their tax payments as well. Another thing is, I am in the process of trying to update our tax bills, so that way the information on those bills are a little bit, it's more valuable to the citizens, information that they're interested in, and maybe we can display the information better. So I have a tax survey out there on our website, on the Treasurer's page, so if you want to go in, it's just ask questions, what would you like to see on it, what can make it better? I've pulled tax bills from seven different, I think it's seven, seven different counties in the, in the state, and so that way, we're going to look at those versus what people are recommending, and try to get the tax bill updated, and hopefully that'll be happening by the end of the year. So there's a couple of things we have going on right now.
That's great, great updates. Any questions or comments?
So we have some discretion on the, on the format of that tax bill? You have discretion?
We have to work with our tax augment, our tax system, and then IT, but there is a little bit discretion.
I know this is probably not going to fly, but I, I'm going to continue to advocate that we would separate the property tax lines, so that the local has a total for local, the state has a total for the state, and the schools have a total for the schools, and there should be a grand total that says pay this amount at the bottom. But by, by, by filtering those that way, because right now, right now, my, my city and the county are like this far apart on my bill, for example, so I'd have to actually get the pencil, do the math, I could figure it out, but most people aren't going to do that. And I just think if you were to break that out and show taxes for local, taxes for state, taxes for schools, at least they've got, it's presented to them that way.
Yeah.
They still know to pay the total amount, this, all three of those together, but I, I think that there's some value added to see that broken out that way. I would love to see that done, or if that's our discretion, or your discretion, or-
And, and we talked last night a little bit at Commissioner Dennis's cab meeting, you know, the breakout of taxes and how, you know, a lot of people, you know, want to, well, you're taking my tax, you know, we give you tax money, but they don't understand that just a small portion of that comes to Cedric County, a majority of their money is going to a school district, or is going to their local, their local city, so. And you've, you've sent me a couple screenshots, so we'll be using that information as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Comms Department, how's it going? All right? Okay, all right. Okay, I think we're done. All right, everybody, we'll see everybody tomorrow.